To call this meeting to order, we are a couple of minutes late from when it was noticed and posted for this work session. This is Tuesday, April eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's two o'clock or two oh two, I believe it was when I looked past. We're in the Board of Supervisors Hearing Room, Melody Lane, Bisbee. Pursuant to ARS thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point oh two H, the public will have access to, physical access to the meeting place fifteen minutes prior to the start of the meeting. And any item on this agenda is open for discussion. We begin with the roll call. District one?
Ross P. Two.
District two supervisor English is present. District three?
Supervisor Judge is here.
We have a complete board. And members of the public may also attend this meeting by Microsoft Teams computer or mobile app, or by phone by calling six oh two, six oh nine, seven five one three, or eight eight eight, six eight zero, six seven one four. Conference ID four five one, nine six eight, three three eight pound. If you have trouble accessing this meeting remotely, call five two zero, four three two, nine two zero zero for direction. Work sessions are a time for county staff to inform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors. Public comments will not be taken. Introductions are important because we have a record of this that people will be listening to. So rather than introduce the people in the room or around the table, I'd like for you to give us your name and your title before you speak so that the record can be complete. Any questions about that? Okay. Mr. Kowalska, did you have any introductions that you wanted to do, or should I just turn it over to Judge Thor?
I'll just turn it over to Judge Thor.
Hey. The word come down. Okay. Judge Thor, you can choose any of the departments or however you want to handle this. I'll leave that up to you.
Well, thanks. I'm, I'm gonna tell you what are my different people are gonna tell you, and then they're gonna tell you what I just told you, they're gonna tell you, and then I'm gonna tell you at the end what they just told you.
Okay, sounds like it's important thing to me.
Okay, and forgive me if some of this seems very basic. I just got this job, and so I don't know how much you know, and I know that we're broadcasting to the public, and so I wanted to just, just educate. I, I assume that you folks know what we're doing here, but make sure that in case anybody else is listening or wants to listen to this, that they'll know what we're talking about. Good afternoon. My name is David Thorne. I'm the presiding judge of the Arizona Superior Court in Cochise County. I was selected for that position by the Arizona Supreme Court and began in January. I'm beginning my fifth year as a Superior Court judge. Prior to being a judge, I was in private practice in Sierra Vista and Bisbee, and seems like a lifetime ago, I was the chief trial counsel at the Cochise County Public Defender's Office. I started my career as a prosecutor at the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, and I've been practicing law in Cochise County for about twenty years. Superior Court in Cochise County has six separate divisions, and five of our judges in the Superior Court are elected. We also have six justices of the peace courts throughout the county. Those judges are elected as well. The justice of the peace also acts as the municipal court judge for the cities of Benson, Wilcox, Douglas, Bisbee, Bowie, and Sierra Vista, and Wachukah City and Tombstone have their own municipal courts. I was interviewed last summer by the chief justice and vice chief justice of the Supreme Court for the presiding judge position. I, I told them, I said, what are your plans? I said, my, my plans are to focus on three things. And they sound a little trite, but forgive me, people, places, and things. The core of any organization are the people who represent the organization. Acquiring competent, committed, and compassionate members of our organization is my goal. Providing our constituents with high-quality services with personal and professional integrity is the mission statement of the Cochise County Board of Supervisors. Workforce development, structured training for employees, enhancing recruitment and retention of employees are some of the priorities of the Board of Supervisors. We share that commitment with you. Our constituents deserve knowledgeable, helpful, and useful employees of the Cochise County Justice System. To that end, our constituents also deserve facilities that represent the seriousness of the business in which they are engaged when they come to seek justice, whether that's in a criminal matter or a civil matter. The physical space they encounter when they come to court to seek justice should be dignified and honor the solemn nature of that elusive thing that we call justice. Whether it's a criminal defendant, a victim, someone getting divorced, a person trying to resolve a loved one's estate, a plaintiff or defendant in a civil action, everybody who comes to court should expect a place will be clean, well-lit, well-maintained. The things are the tools that we all utilize to do our jobs. From ballistic vests and tasers for our court security officers to the computers and printers and the law libraries, our employees and our constituents need the tools to accomplish the tasks necessary to reach your goals. In a moment, we're gonna hear from my friend Judge Jonas Poppy. He's the justice of the peace and precinct one in Bisbee. He's gonna tell you about the increase in case filings on our justice courts, and specifically about the increase in initial appearance hearings during the weekends due mostly to border-related crimes. I'm sure you've heard a lot about that from county attorney's office and Sheriff Daniels. After Judge Poppy, I think this is the order, after Judge Poppy, we're gonna hear from my friend Amy Hunley, who's the clerk of the court. Court administration and the clerk of the court work hand in glove to provide access to justice throughout Cochise County. Amy managed to keep the wheels on the wagon after her predecessor left the office in a precarious state, I'm sure you remember that, and through the unprecedented challenges of the COVID-nineteen epidemic. We never closed the courts despite huge staff shortages and many staffers taking time off to quarantine. Her office is now nearly fully staffed, but recruiting and retaining court specialists is becoming more difficult because of the compensation she can offer them and because of predation by other departments. What do I mean by that? I am guilty of poaching no fewer than three of her best clerks to work for me as my judicial assistant. Almost every other judge is guilty of the same offense, at least in the Superior Court. The county attorney's office and the public defender's offices are guilty as well. That's because we can afford to pay a judicial assistant or a legal secretary about ten thousand more per year than clerk's office can afford to pay them. And while I mean in no way, if anybody's listening, to diminish the challenges of being a judicial assistant or a legal secretary or a paralegal, working in the clerk clerk's office means you have to know about all types of cases, not just criminal cases. Brought in a cheap gimmick to show you, these are the rules of criminal procedure. That's what somebody who's a legal secretary or working in the paralegal in the county attorney's office or the public defender's offices, that's what they need to know. That is what the clerks need to know. So they, they have to know a lot more. Sorry, I'm just gonna steal some of Amy's thunder, but the Superior Court clerks handled nearly, I didn't know this until I was shocked when she told me this, nearly a hundred thousand documents last year. Okay, every one of those documents has to be reviewed by a person, and the person has to know what to do with that document. They have to process them and send it to the right place at the right time. Everyone in the entire legal community, from law enforcement to the civil lawyers to everybody relies on the clerks to do their jobs competently. It's a very difficult job. Our clerks are the, what I call the outward-facing team members, meaning they have to interact with the public. So the public are often self-represented, mostly self-represented litigants. They're criminal defendants, they're crime victims, all sorts of civil litigants. And these folks are often very stressed, and they can be overwhelmed by the legal process. I was looking at her website the other day, and in order to get a simple guardianship for a minor, like grandma needs a guardianship because she's gotta take care of the grandkids for some reason. It's ninety-one pages of instructions and filling out the form over and over again. It's, it can be overwhelming, especially if you're not used to dealing with the system, let alone getting a divorce or modifying child support, things like that. Our clerks are prohibited from providing legal advice, and the line between legal advice and legal information is can be hazy to say, to be generous. And a lot of times the clerks aren't able to help them, help litigants fill out the paperwork, and they ask them, what do I do now? And I think as a result, I don't think I know as a result, some of our clerks can suffer from, we call trauma transfer, from dealing with people going through what are often the worst times of their lives, right? Divorce, being sued, being crime victims, being accused of committing a crime. And their compensation should reflect the difficulty of their jobs and the extensive knowledge required to do their jobs competently. After Amy, we're gonna hear from Robert Cornato. Anybody ever called you Robert before? Your grandpa? Mr. Cornato is head of our court security. Court security officers are often the first people to first people our, our customers encounter when they enter our facilities. In addition to keeping staff and the judges safe, they also keep all of our customers safe, and they assist the sheriff's transportation deputies during criminal hearings. More importantly, they provide our customers with information such as location of courtrooms and the law library. And so what they do is very important. He's gonna tell us about the number of people that come in and out of our facilities, the kinds of things that they find during screening, and let's just say I'm glad that they're there between me and the bench. After after Mr. Cornato, we're gonna hear from Mando Arias. Thank you so much. Yeah. Mr. Arias has been our chief deputy probation officer for the, for the past five years. And I selected him to be our probation chief when our current chief retires in July, John Scowl. I've known Armando for many years, and he's gonna serve us well, and I'm very confident in him. He's gonna tell us about some of the challenges of recruiting and retaining probation officers and how our probation officers are facing increasing risks due to border-related crimes and its connection with international drug and human, uh, human trafficking cartels. He's also gonna tell you about some of his plans to make some positions in the probation department, hybrid positions, well, which will make some of our employees safer. And it's gonna create a retention advantage, I think, for the probation department by allowing some folks to work from home most of the time. If you're not driving to Bisbee every day to go to work, you're, you're liable to save more money, so that that's good. You're gonna hear from our top juvenile probation officer, Sarah Graves. Many of the individuals involved in human smuggling are juveniles, and they're recruited by cartels through social media like TikTok. Many of them come to Cochise County from Phoenix and Tucson because they're promised easy money for picking up the undocumented aliens and driving them north. They are typically instructed to flee from the police if they attempt to stop them, and the results are often tragic when these inexperienced drivers flee from the police and border patrol at high speeds. Ms. Graves is gonna tell you that, and sorry for stealing your thunder, that I think this is a big deal. For the first time in, that anyone can remember, nobody who was on intensive juvenile probation, which is highest level supervision, was revoked on probation and sent to the Department of Corrections for juveniles. And this is the direct result of the excellent work and dedication of our juvenile probation officers. It's a big deal. Yeah, yeah, thank you. We're gonna hear from Rita Shipley. She's gonna give us the lowdown on the case numbers and make the big ask. But maybe, no, after Ms. Graves, I'm sorry, Judge Bannon, I skipped Judge Bannon. Judge Bannon is gonna talk to us for a few minutes about what's going on in the dependencies and juvenile court. Lots of case filings. I, I anticipate that based on the case filings, we're at least gonna meet or exceed next year's case filings for border-related crimes. Yeah, I think. Well, I put this part in here. Here's what I think, at least for the border-related crimes, what's gonna happen. I think we're gonna see a surge in border-related crimes during the next several months in the lead-up to the presidential election. If, I think that a lot of people are going to surge coming across the line because they're afraid that there might be a policy change on our immigration policies from the executive branch. I think you know exactly what I'm talking about. And if people are worried that a different president is going to lock down the border, we're gonna see a surge of people coming across the line. So we need to be prepared, and we need resources to handle that. I don't mean to throw anybody under the bus or cast aspersions, but you all know, all three of you, you've been here a long time on the board, that we often in Cochise County have to do what other agencies, who, other governmental agencies, who really should be doing things differently. We have to, we have to pick up the slack when they don't. So when somebody makes an arrest, whether it's border patrol turning over the sheriff's department or something like that, everyone sitting around here has to react to that. Most cases, people wind up on probation. But we all have to react to whatever law enforcement's doing, and we need the resources to, to do that. So without any further ado, Judge Poppy.
Thank you, Judge Thor, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, board members. I'll try to be brief. I'm Jonas Poppy. I'm the Bisbee Justice of the Peace, as well as I'm the associate presiding justice of the peace for Cochise County. I'll be discussing actually three separate requests today. So I'll be brief. I'll be happy to answer questions or elaborate should you have any questions. The three topics I'll be addressing, one, the funding for the pro temps and a little bit about what they do. The second's going to be staffing for the justice courts, in particular, three of the justice courts. They each have one staff member that's funded by the enhancement fund for the courts, and feel it should be funded by the general fund. And the last will be addressing possibility of staff wage increases. They're asking for that. First, I'll discuss the weekend pro temps. The judicial branch plays an important role in our democracy and is tasked with maintaining the protection of an individual's rights in the process. The justice of the peace is responsible for initial appearance for all new complaints, both misdemeanor and felonies concerning individuals who are in custody. Initial appearance must be held within twenty-four hours after the individual's arrest. A few years ago, the presiding judge at the time made available the service of justice court as a central point for weekend encasement hearings. The reason for this is that a victim has a right to appear at every proceeding that a defendant has a right to appear, including the initial appearance. The time we didn't have the technology for every court to provide the ability for victims to be present, which was the simplest solution to ensure that the rights of all parties are being upheld. Since that time, the courts have been funding the pro temps through the fill-the-gap fund. And the court's asking that the misfunding be reassigned to the general fund for the purposes to allow the fill-up gap fund and assisting probation. You see a slide up there. Our weekend judges, just later, twenty twenty-two, saw about eight hundred and ninety-nine custody less, and that number went to one thousand seventy-five and twenty-three, which is about twenty encasements per weekend. It looks like they're gonna be on track to meet that one thousand seventy-five number again this year. I'm next to address. If you, you actually pay more money or what? No, basically, it's kind of. Right now, it's the fill-the-gap, and you, Shipley can probably explain that a little better than I can. That funds the pro-tem salaries, and we'd like to see that go to the general fund so that fill the gap fund and deal with probation and assist them. Should there be some some changes. And I'm not too familiar with probation, but it sounds like you're gonna have some upcoming expenditures in a way. Next, I'd like to address the funding of staff for the three quarters, Benson, Wilcox, and Bowie Justice Courts. Each of these three courts maintain one staff member through the court enhancement fund. These positions are necessary for the function of the court. There is concern that the long-term health of the enhancement fund is degrading. Civil traffic filings have increased significantly in these three courts. In the Bowie Justice Court, the civil traffic filings have increased from nine hundred and fifty-one filings in two thousand and twenty to one thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight filings in two thousand and twenty-three. The Benson Justice Court civil traffic filings have increased from three thousand two hundred and eighty-seven in two thousand and twenty to five thousand three hundred and fifty in two thousand and twenty-three. And the Wilcox Justice Court civil traffic files have increased from three thousand four hundred and eighty-three in two thousand and twenty to six thousand nine hundred and nine, one twenty-three. With the additional filings, of course, that increases the amount of civil traffic hearings that are gonna be required. The Benson Justice Court has doubled its civil traffic calendar, and it may have to triple it. Requesting the funding for these three positions, we move to the general fund as well. And it's necessary to maintain the staffing levels for the board. Lastly, I'd like to discuss staff wage increase. Arizona, approximately ninety percent of all cases start at justice courts. And over the last several years, there've been significant changes in the automation of the courts, the performance requirements and knowledge of the clerk have substantially changed as well, and to the point where reclassification was necessary to meet the needs of the court. Last year, you approved the reclassification and funded that. We're grateful for that. Instance, last year, the starting salary was fifteen percent of the minimum wage after reclassifying. As a result, the staff turnover rate has increased from fifteen-nine percent in twenty-three to thirty-eight percent one four. I can see that number go lower, but that's what we have. The minimum wage increases here to fourteen thirty-five an hour. Its cost of problem is now our starting wage has reduced to eleven percent higher than minimum wage. The cost of recruiting, training, and maintaining a clerk is expensive. And if we're to maintain institutional knowledge of a well-qualified staff, we must increase their salary to save the market value or risk returning to a higher turnover rate. With that, I'd like to thank the board for your support last year. Any questions?
Basically, you want to fill a gap, you need to go to somebody else, and you want those positions to be taken over by the board?
Well, you fund, yes.
Not address that, Supervisor English, when I get to the funding request section, I'll go over those.
No other questions? I'm happy to use the equipment, Superior Court, saying nothing.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm Amy Hunley, and I'm the clerk of the Superior Court. The clerk's office is requesting salary adjustment funds to increase salaries as set out by the AOC Salary Survey. Based on the survey, the minimum starting salary for a deputy clerk to, after successfully passing a one-year probation, would be twenty dollars and sixty-eight cents an hour. This salary is based on the wide range of complex cases that are handled by deputy clerks and the extensive knowledge and responsibility required to do this important work. The clerk is the official record keeper for the Superior Court, the financial officer, the jury commissioner, and the private register. When people come to court, they're dealing with difficult situations, and clerks are their first point of contact. We assist about twenty-three thousand customers in person each year, in addition to answering phones and emails. It's our job to help customers navigate a complicated system. There are over five hundred statute rules that apply to the work we do, and our responsibilities include processing every record for every case type, including appeals, not only for Superior Court, but also for the justice and municipal courts. We collect and disperse all fine fees and victim restitution, and we maintain bank accounts for those monies. As jury commissioner, we're required to summon jurors for trials in every court, including the Superior Court grand jury and the state grand jury. We issue marriage licenses, process passport applications, and we maintain a list of bail bondsmen and private process servers. The Superior Court is a court of record. Deputy clerks have to know how to process every document in every case type to ensure that the record is complete. The clerk's office processes approximately a hundred thousand documents annually, eighty percent in paper and twenty percent through electronic filings. And each, each filing needs to be processed, reviewed by a clerk, just like the paper does. It sounds like it may be a little simpler process, but it's really not. Our courtroom clerks take minutes, learn witnesses, and have responsibility for all exhibits submitted in hearings. Our clerks have responsibilities that range from issuing marriage licenses and processing child support orders to issuing a warrant for someone's arrest. In criminal cases, clerks are responsible for processing sentencing documents, issuing and questioning warrants, and sending reports to DPS that can affect whether a person can purchase a firearm. We also submit reports for mental health and guardianship cases that affect whether someone can drive or vote. We need to pay these clerks more than what a fast food restaurant pays for our employees. A year ago, we were paying deputy clerk fifty cents above minimum wage. Our turnover rate was a hundred percent. At one point, we had thirteen vacancies in our thirty-two positions, and the remaining staff were all very new employees. We were unable to answer phone calls and emails. We weren't processing documents timely, which was causing delays in court proceedings. E-filing was taking three to four weeks to process. Minute entries in sentencing documents were taking weeks to process as well, and that caused defendants to be held in jail longer than necessary, which also resulted in additional costs to the jail. At the end of May last year, we were able to reclassify our employees and increase their beginning salary to fifteen dollars and ninety-four cents an hour with an automatic, with an automatic increase to seventeen thirty-eight after passing a one-year probation successfully. As a result, we saw an increase in the quality and the number of applicants we received, and we've been able to fill and retain most of our positions. We currently have four vacancies, and our turnover rate is just over thirty-six percent. Also, we're now processing documents quickly, and our e-filing is processed within twenty-four hours of receipt rather than weeks later. Since minimum wage increased in January, we've seen a noticeable decline in applications. If we don't receive funds to, to provide salary increases, we'll lose the good employees we have, and we'll once again have the issues we saw last year. The clerk's office is the backbone of the Superior Court, and if we're not able to perform our duties, the entire judicial system suffers. Thank you for your time today. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have for me.
Any questions?
Nope, thank you very much.
Do you have vacancies? I think I remember, maybe Judge Thor mentioned that.
We have four vacancies right now.
And you have how many? What's your staff?
Thirty-two. I'll pass it over to Bobby Cornato, Chief Secretary.
Thank you. My I'm gonna say speech, but my talking points are more of an overview of what our department does. A lot of people see us, fraud dollars, when we come in, that they don't necessarily know what our department does and what, how we serve the court, so that's more of the purpose of it. So, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good afternoon, and thank you for allowing me to speak about this. My name is Bobby Cornato. I'm the chief of security, chief, as a chief bailiff for Cochise County Superior Justice Courts. Including myself, I have one part-time and twenty full-time armed certified officers who provide not only security, but also bailiff duties for all of our courtrooms for justice and for the nine-location Cochise County or justice courts. On January eighth of two thousand and twenty, the Arizona Supreme Court established a judicial code of, judicial code of administration, also known as ACJAs. The particular court that we work under on that is gonna be five dash three zero one and three zero seven, and those are for security, uh, security standards. These codes were established to ensure the safety and security of all judicial officers, court personnel, customers located within the court locations. And when I say court locations, it could be, if this for whatever reason, when they, because the judge is in the, in the location that he's in right now, this would be considered to be a, a location for being, it could be in session, so it could be an off-site situation where we go to a, a different venue, and those are the different locations that we can actually have court at. These codes were first established to, established in part and duty to the officers to detain and take off, take offenders into custody, as well as our firearms code, electrical weapons code, and also our use-of-force codes. The ACJAs, along with Arizona Vice Statute twelve, two ninety-nine, ten, clearly define the expectations and requirements of state-oriented departments statewide. And so they're trying to get all departments within the state that handle court security and court bailiffs to have the same standards statewide, so you don't have one doing one and one doing the other. But these standardizations that mandate officers must attend a court security officer chat within ninety days of employment. And then once that is complete, they will also be required to have a basic firearms academy within they say a short time after, but that depends on the time of the year that they're having the academies to, to have an officer attend those academies. This focuses on officers' use of force, judgmental use of force, and also the fundamentals of, of, of the firearms portion of it. This curriculum is taught, is taught statewide, and ensures these Uh, this curriculum is taught, is taught statewide and ensures these safe, um. I'm sorry, I lost my place here. Uh, Cochise County aids the administrative office of courts by offering firearms, kind of to the, by instructing, but also, we also invite neighboring counties to come to our trainings within county, um, Anna Cruz and, um, Green, they don't have necessarily the resources, uh, the firearm instructors to have, so we invite them to, uh, come down to our training so they can not be trained as well. All our Superior and Justice Courts locations in Cochise County had a total of three hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four visitors last year. Uh, in, and year twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, with every visitor, uh, the officers that have to meet and process, uh, these individuals while in front of the building. And with three complete quarters of fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, we've already had two hundred and ninety-one thousand, um, thousand people come through the door. And fit a little over fifteen hundred weapons as of, um. As of March thirty-first. Our totally stats show that we've had a steady rise in visitors to our courts over the last eighteen months. And there's a substantial increase in traffic contributing to court proceedings, jury trials, general court services, including our large, a very large increase in the self-representing litigants going to our self-help centers. For these, um, the slides that are up on the, um, board right now, watch and show, um, upon the inspections of items that were found within the various courts. The weapons that we found were consisted mainly of guns, knife, pepper spray, miscellaneous weapons such as cooper tongs, wallet change, multi-tools, brass knuckles, and everyday tools, screwdrivers, things to that effect. And I've given a, um. I've given some of, the image you're seeing right here are images of the X-ray images. So you have some, uh, guns that were located versus a fully gun, a fully loaded gun in purse. Um, they have knives that are located within the wallets themselves.
I got one of them.
Do you?
Yeah.
Um, and then you also have things that are disguised as, as cones or everyday items. Um, these items are not necessarily illegal to have. They're just illegal to be, or not allowed to be in the, on the premise. Officers who attend, uh, the mentioned academies that I spoke about, uh, receive extensive training and have decked these items. Um, they use magnetometer walk-throughs, x-rays, handheld metal detectors, and also in certain situations, they actually will have hand pat hounds if necessary. Um, and I have provided a breakdown of last of the fiscal years of the previous fiscal years, twenty-two and twenty-three, and also twenty-three and twenty-four up until March. Um, our buildings, uh, all six buildings of the Justice Courts and the three buildings we have, the Superior Court um, have had, as mentioned, a hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and forty-five into our Justice Courts, a hundred and eighty-one thousand, ninety-eight-six into our Superior Courts. We have to date found eight hundred and thirty-four, um, weapons in our Justice Courts and also six hundred and sixty-nine, uh, Superior Courts. We, um, that equates to two guns in our Justice Courts. Six hundred and fifty-nine or six hundred and fifty-six knives, twenty-four pepper sprays, and a hundred and fifty-two of the miscellaneous weapons that I spoke about. Uh, we have one gun, five hundred and ninety-two knives, and twenty-one pepper sprays, along with forty-eight miscellaneous weapons at our Superior Court locations as of March. Uh, we're well on track to be over the fifteen hundred that we had in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, total number in just the year twenty-two, twenty-three, we had a hundred and thirty-five thousand good visitors to our, our Justice Courts. Two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six thirteen to our Superior Court buildings. Uh, with the combined, as, as I spoke about, a combined, uh, number of weapons that were, uh, stopped from coming into the building were fifteen hundred and three. Um, that consists of two guns, uh, with the majority of them being knives. Not that there's any intent of going into the buildings to do any harm. Uh, people just forget sometimes that they have these things in their, in their, uh, purses, wallets, and pockets. And upon inspection, they're not allowing to come in the building with those things. With that, um, kind of a brief summary as far as the duties that we formed, are there any questions I?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, esteemed members of the board. My name is Ramon Daria. I'm the Deputy Chief for Cochise County Adult Probation Services. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to inform you about adult probation and some of the services that we provide to our communities. The Adult Probation Services Division provides pre-sentence and pre-trial services to defendants and the court. We provide community-based supervision to about seven hundred and thirty probationers residing in Cochise County. Furthermore, we provide casework and supervision assistance to four hundred and twenty-two probationers residing in other counties in Arizona. I'd like to start off by addressing our pre-sentence unit. The team is responsible for meeting with defendants prior to sentencing and gathering case information and completing assessments with defendants. A pre-sentence report is then generated and provided to the sentencing judge to provide additional information about the case and any risks or needs that defendant may have that probation could assess with. Over the last two years, the pre-sentence unit has experienced an increase in human smuggling and related cases that has brought upon an additional workload. This last year, human smuggling and related cases accounted for roughly twenty-eight percent of reports completed for the court. The second area that I would like to touch on is our out-of-county case law. This case law currently consists of four hundred and twenty-two probationers that are actively supervised in other counties in Arizona. This case law, like the pre-sentence unit, has also experienced an increase in the number of human smuggling and related cases, with these cases now accounting for roughly forty-seven percent of the case law. Our department is working with the clerk's office to transfer jurisdiction of some of these out-of-county cases in an effort to provide better services to probationers and to minimize the number of probationers on the out-of-county case law. Petitions for a determination of probation are also being sought on some cases, meeting criteria for early termination. If the hu, if the human smuggling trend continues, additional staff will be needed for this case law. Lastly, I'd like to discuss community supervision. There's been an increase in the number of probationers that are sentenced to supervise probation, who require additional resources and present a greater risk to probation officers, the courts, and the communities we serve. This, in conjunction with continued understaffing issues, creates an unsafe work environment for probation staff. In closing, I want to recognize and inform you that our pre-sentence unit continues to provide excellent services to our defendants, victims, and the court, despite having two vacancies for almost two years now. The unit supervisor and her staff have all assumed additional duties, aiding with the increase in reports and ensuring quality and timely reports are provided to the court. Our field probation officers and supervisors work diligently and strive to maintain statutorily required probationary contacts in the office and in the field, despite having numerous vacancies throughout the last two years. I thank you for your support and respectfully ask that you continue to support our department through adequate funding. That ultimately translates to better staff safety, better outcomes for probationers, and less risk to our communities and the public we serve. I'm open to any questions. Thank you. I'd like to turn it all over to Sarah Graves, Deputy Chief for Juvenile Probation Services.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Sarah Graves. I am Deputy Chief of Probation and the Juvenile Detention Screening and Transport Unit. Juvenile court services is a complex, multi-layered effort to meet youth where they are in the court process and to make victims whole. It is my understanding that today the focus should be on juvenile detention. Youth are detained for serious felony crimes such as unlawful flight, kidnap, aggravated assault with a deadly weapon, and participation in human smuggling. Youth are also detained on petitions to revoke probation and warrants. Detained youth enter detention in three ways. They are detained on a juvenile referral, juvenile petition, or cited as an adult detained in the adult jail. If they are cited as an adult, defense counsel can petition for the case to be remanded back to the juvenile court. All youth who are detained initially or remanded back are transported by the detention screening and transport team to town, to Pinal County or Cochise County. This holding in an out-of-county facility has occurred since the transition of the detention center to the transport team in twenty twenty. The building itself is still actively utilized for the transport and court process, numerous staff trainings, and youth programming. It should be noted that Pinal has worked tirelessly with us to maintain the original per diem rate in the initial contract. However, we have been advised the new chief in Pinal is evaluating all existing IGAs. And in July twenty twenty-five, the current three hundred and forty-seven dollars per day could increase to four hundred to four hundred and fifty per day. The Detention Screening and Transport Unit is funded for ARS eight through five by the county, of which we continue to appreciate your support. Thank you. There is concern about the length of stay of youth in detention. We are aware of this concern as it relates to the costs, but more importantly, as it, how it affects the youth and the families. The length of stay of youth in detention is often driven by external issues. The first external issue that drives up this length of staying detention is the complexity of the cases of, uh, the youth that are detained. Youth who are detained and charged with sexual misconduct with a minor endangerment in relation to the human smuggling, drug trafficking, aggravated assault, and other serious felony charges require a deep dive into the youth case. Often, this dive presents a need for further evaluation by psychologists to ensure youth are provided with the most appropriate services. Additional external issues are detained youth waiting space at a placement. Placements for youth are completed by the youth's insurance, their counseling provider, or contracted services between our department and the administrative office of the courts. Placements for our youth are all out-of-county and utilized by other counties, causing the detained youth to have to wait for a bed. In the best interest of the youth and the success in placement, and their success, excuse me, placements do require you to go straight from detention into the placement. The juvenile competency process is another factor that can drive up a youth's length of stay, yet it is in the best interest of the youth. Detained youth cases are complex cases that require the entire team of players from detention, defense, county attorney, treatment, psychologist, schools, guardians, and probation, just to name a few, to work on vetting out the best resolution for the youth, the community, and the victim. Please know we are working internally to make an impact on reducing this average length of stay through continued efforts and discussions between the departments you involved in the youth case. In closing, I would like to highlight the efforts of the probation department and the impact the staff has on the community. The first and many ways staff and their efforts make a great impact is through the diversion program. Diversion is an opportunity for you to receive immediate intervention for their actions while diverting them away from the formal court process. Secondly, probation staff impact the community with the youth who require standard and intensive probation supervision by providing them with resources, programs, intervention, and help. And just like you heard Judge Thorntons talk about earlier, this success is highlighted by the fact that we had no juvenile intensive probation use committed to the Arizona Department of Juvenile Corrections in twenty twenty-three. I would add to our success here in that we work hard to detain only youth who are arrested themselves or the community. And last year, we had sixty-six stays with no kids in detention. The private, the previous year, we had seventy-seven days, and that was the first time, I believe, in Cochise County history that there was no youth in detention. I'll finish by sharing that the dedicated juvenile court services staff go above and beyond to impact our community through various educational programs. Juvenile court services works with schools to create relationships that allow for preventative efforts of youth. Strengthening families courses are provided to make the whole family where they are and impart skills for success. Furthermore, our dedication continues with educating our community specifically about fentanyl and human trafficking. If you have any questions. And I would like to hand it off for additional comments to Judge Baman.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisor Judd and Supervisor Crosby. Last year, we had a hundred and forty-eight new petitions filed in juvenile court, and that is just in the delinquency realm. That was fifty over what we had had the previous year. And the types of crimes that we are seeing these days are very serious, very significant. We're seeing a lot of physical assaults that result in significant and long-term permanent damage to the juveniles. We're seeing an increase in sexual assault. We are seeing an increase in children having possession and trafficking child pornography. In addition to the human smuggling cases that we are seeing, I don't mean to paint the bleak picture. But the truth of it is, is despite the increase in the number of petitions and despite the seriousness of the crimes that we're encountering, we are maintaining a low detention rate, and that is really through vigorous intervention of juvenile probation officers. They are the gatekeeper of who is, gets, who gets detained. And so they also interface with law enforcement when law enforcement would like to detain a juvenile. They have to run that through the detention screening process to see if that juvenile is really ripe for detention. We are doing really all we can to keep those detention numbers low and keep the length of detention as minimal as possible, and we're doing that to the very best of our ability. And I think there's been some evidence of success of that. I don't know what happened in previous years and why there were so many juveniles detained, but we know that we tried to stop that two years ago. And that was really through a concerted and cooperative effort of working to address that problem. It was me who called Pinal to get a forecast of what was going to happen with the budget for detention because I needed to know. I was curious and I wanted to know. And so I called, and when I was told a, a number, I kind of incremented up, and I said, so are you talking maybe three seventy-five? The answer was no. Are you talking four hundred? Oh, no. What about four twenty-five? Can I get a four twenty-five? The answer to that was no. And I was told it's really probably going to look more like four fifty a day. That is an extraordinary amount of money. And with that in mind, we're doing outreach. I had a meeting with the school principals a week and a half ago to see what we can do to get in the schools to minimize the number of juveniles who are entering the juvenile system. Thank you for your time. Appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, I actually said, I have a special, uh, feeling for, um, of, um, praise for juvenile probation in particular because of the way that they, in the last few years, have approached, uh, these children, and I, I want to refer to them as children who still need intervention, but do not necessarily need incarceration. And so I think that the, the programs that you are working now could always be improved upon instead of, uh, looking for more places that we can put them. Sometimes that's necessary because of, of, like I say, threats to themselves or to others. But, um, I just wanted to thank you for all the progress that's been made. And, um, and I hope that we can continue that. We, we can't change these students without changing our approach though. And so, as you say, going to these schools and offering those kinds of interventions, uh, but you can tell the story a lot of times because we've always said, just say no. Well, that didn't work. So we've got to figure out a different way to say that so that it makes an impact on the young people, but no dissertation, but I just wanted to thank you for the work that's been done in the past, but I think we've made great strides. So, thank you.
I call it, sir.
Okay.
Now, for anybody in this room that doesn't know what my background is like, I'm just going to go into a little bit. I cut my teeth in law enforcement doing security, uh, in a naval base, a lot like what you see at Fort Huachuca. At the, at the gate on the entry. Next, I was on my way to meet a probation officer working at the San Diego Department of Juvenile Corrections and the California Youth Authority. And I finally ended up doing a career with the Border Patrol for twenty-six years in four different sectors. I did Bible study in jail in two counties, in two counties in English and in Spanish, about twelve years, one hour a week, and I estimate I've been in our county jail about two hundred hours. So what I'm looking for, this is, well, not yet, you might be sending, might be sending, I mean, some deal somewhere, but, uh, this is border incarceration from last year's budget, which was, uh, border crimes and car, incarceration cost of four point three million dollars. So I wanted to, uh, proceed with the same comments that I gave to the sheriff and the county attorney. So I wanted to proceed with the same comments that I gave to the sheriff and the county attorney yesterday, which is failures to yield, fentanyl deaths, court costs, medical costs, and incarceration are decreased to the degree that illegal entry is prevented. And now I'm going to just read from eleven ten fifty one, which is counties, and it's the title of A R S. Eleven ten fifty one is cooperation and assistance in enforcement of immigration laws and indemnification. And this is just the first sentence, and I don't, I mean, it's at least a couple pages. It says, no official or agency of this state or a county, city, town, or other political subdivision of the state may limit or restrict the enforcement of federal immigration laws to less than full extent permitted by federal law. So that is an imperative, and it's black and white, easy to understand. It isn't a question if the county can participate in immigration enforcement, is the county must participate in immigration enforcement. And there is other sections of federal law like eight U S C eleven eighty two, most primarily which has to do with exclusibility. So, Mr. Thorne, if you would care to comment on any
This is a blanket discussion.
Well, Madam Chair, you know what? If you took a look at your handout, you would notice, well, like I said, four point three million dollars in incarceration costs.
I I don't disagree, and the county should be reimbursed for by the federal government for doing that kind of work. It's a little bit beyond my beyond my scope of of knowledge, and I'm not going to pretend to understand the inner workings of the the intersection of federal reimbursement to the states. That not my not my area of expertise, and if I find that I don't know what I'm talking about, I should keep my mouth shut. But I don't disagree with you that the federal government should be reimbursing Cochise County and should be doing more to prevent Cochise County from being one of the major highways of human trafficking and drug trafficking up north. But I don't want to steal, I don't want to steal any of the spotlight from Miss Shipley, because she's going to talk about that. And one of the things that I don't think that the that the case numbers represent, but it's it's something that Ms. Graves brought up and something I think I brought up at the beginning, is if you're sitting there and you're looking at the number of cases, the new cases filed, the new felony cases, et cetera, the number of initial parent hearings, and you're saying, well, they want a bunch more money, but the numbers, I don't look that that far off or they're they're pretty consistent. It's the complexity of the cases, like Ms. Graves said, that are the real driving force here. So it's not one guy in a car with two hundred pounds of marijuana in the trunk, and a police officer pulls him over and puts him in jail and sends a core sample up to the lab, and we start processing the guy. It's a kid from Phoenix who doesn't have any criminal record that we know of, and he's got six Hondurans in the back of his mom's Suburban, and he's leading the cops on a hundred and twenty mile an hour chase, and hopefully he doesn't crash and kill a couple of people or hurt them really bad. But now we have to deal with juvenile, and we have to deal with maybe he's going to be in an adult filing, and maybe the car is stolen, so it's it's the the complexity of the case is greater. So every victim and undocumented immigrants are often, whether you want to call them undocumented immigrants or illegal aliens or whatever, the folks who are who are there, they're often, you know, victimized. They didn't sign up to get in a high-speed chase. Maybe they did, but, you know. So when you're looking at just the wrong numbers and considering the budget increases that we're that that we're asking for, that's really the takeaway that I wanted you to have, which is the clerk's office does really important work and has to make sure all of this stuff is working correctly, and they should, the people that work for Amy starting out should make more than the folks that work at Mod Pizza, period, and full stop. The probation officers who are ultimately going to have to watch these folks who, you know, maybe it's a kid from from Phoenix who took his mom's Suburban, or maybe it's some guy who flew in from Florida or who flew in from Seattle, and he's mobbed up basically with international drug cartels, and he's going to lead the cops on a chase. We have more homicides pending in Cochise County right now than any time we've had since I've been here, and I've been here for twenty years. We used to have two or three a year, a couple of people hopped up on drugs, would kill each other, or some guy would kill his wife or girlfriend or something like that. Now we have something like a dozen pending homicides, and they're almost all based on car wrecks from people getting ejected out of the car and getting killed, or people running from the running from Border Patrol and crashing into people. We're about to start a trial, I'm not sure which division, where a kid who's sixteen years old, he's running for Border Patrol, he's got three guys in his car, allegedly. But what's what's not allegedly is that he plowed into this lady who just retired. She's driving from Benson down to Sierra Vista to celebrate, I think, her sixty-fifth birthday, gets T-boned at bus staying quarters. She's dead. The immigrants are hurt real bad. That's that's what we're all trying to tell you is that the stuff that we're all doing, that they're all doing, I mean, I'm the probate judge, big deal. But that they're doing is real work, and the folks that work for them need to be paid some real wages. That's it. So Rita prepared this really great slideshow for us, and if if you have any more questions for you.
I started out saying failures to yield, fentanyl deaths, court costs, medical costs, incarceration are decreased to the degree that we or whoever will will prevent illegal entry. So what I'm saying is prevent illegal entry as opposed to let them in, chase them around, get their dope, put them in jail, put them in the system and all that kind of stuff. And we're talking about just the incarceration being four point three million. That'd go a long way for personnel the courts and everybody else, not to mention reduce violence and misery and so on.
I I don't disagree with any of that, but I think that's beyond the Cochise Department of Administration's ability to stop the influx of people who enter our country without proper authorization. But we're doing the best we can to react to that, like I said earlier.
Not unless you want to get a
Not really. This is your room.
Thank you for all the comments there. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Supervisors Crosby and Judd. I'm Rita Shipley, the Budget and Finance Director for the Superior Courts. On behalf of the judicial branch, we want to thank the county for the funding that was provided for fiscal year twenty four, specifically the reclassification of the court support staff. For the first time since I've been with the courts, the justice courts are fully staffed. Turnover has decreased from fifty nine percent last year to thirty eight percent, and morale has increased. This boost in salaries and morale has helped us get through the challenges we face this year due to the increase in the human smuggling cases, which has increased the workload on the judicial system. For fiscal year twenty five, we will continue to feel the impact of the human smuggling cases and also anticipate a funding deficit from the A O C for probation funding. During last week's work session when the board reviewed early revenue projections, it was noted that the Joint Legislative Budget Committee was forecasting a two point two billion dollar shortfall in state funding. The A O C has indicated they expect a ten million dollar shortfall for statewide probation funding. We will need to use our probation fee accounts to cover the salary increases that were implemented this year. We plan for this scenario every year, as there's usually a one-year lag period from when the raises are implemented and when the A O C will start covering the increases. Fortunately, the A O C has been able to cover the increases for the last several years. We are expecting to receive the fiscal year twenty five funding agreements in May, and then we'll have a better estimate of the shortfall we will need to cover. We understand that the county will also be impacted by the state funding shortfall, and we'll need to prioritize which funding request to approve. While planning for next year's budget, I researched available grants and other court fees, which brings me to our first funding request, which is to fund the Justice of Peace Pro Tempore judges through general fund. As Judge Poppy had indicated, the pro temp judges conduct the initial appearance hearings on weekends, holidays, and when the justice J P judges need to attend training. Court administration has been covering the personnel expenses using fill the gap fund. The initial and ongoing cost is estimated at forty five thousand dollars per year, and this request is per statute A R S twenty two dash one twenty three, which indicates that these expenses shall be covered by the county. Funding request two is the clerk of the court market study and salary increase. The clerk's office is requesting that the county use the market study that was commissioned by the A O C as the market source for deputy clerk one through five positions for fiscal year twenty five. The study was conducted by employers' council and prepared in November of two thousand and twenty three. The study was adjusted by the employment cost index for each county, using Maricopa as the baseline, which equates to negative four point four percent for Cochise County. Based on that market study, the minimum starting salary for the deputy clerk two would increase to forty three thousand twenty dollars per year or twenty dollars and sixty eight cents per hour. This, the initial and ongoing cost is estimated at two hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars per year. Funding request number three is the court support staff salary increase. Last year, court assistants and court specialists in the justice courts, probation and court administration were reclassified to clerk one through five tiers. Every classification provided a career path to higher salaries, which were fifteen percent higher than the minimum wage at hire. This increased the number and caliber of applicants that we saw through the first half of the fiscal year. However, when minimum wage increased in January two thousand and twenty four by three point six percent to fourteen dollars and thirty five cents per hour, the number of quality applicants again decreased. The minimum starting salary is now only eleven percent higher than the minimum wage. Since minimum wage is now based on the Consumer Price Index, we need to review the entry level salaries every year to remain competitive. The Consumer Price Index twelve-month percentage change from March was only announced last week and has increased to three point five percent. If this trend continues, we expect an increase to minimum wage of approximately three to four percent next January, which will reduce that wage differential to seven to eight percent. To maintain the fifteen percent differential and to build in a margin for the C P I increases, we request a nine percent increase to each tier. This would impact forty nine support staff positions. The initial and ongoing cost is estimated at a hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and seventy one dollars per year. Funding request four is the probation salary survey. Probation and detention are requesting that the county review the salary survey and analysis from the A O C in fiscal year twenty five, but for implementation in fiscal year twenty six. The study was conducted by Evergreen Solutions and prepared in February of two thousand and twenty three. And the reason for delaying the implementation until fiscal year twenty six is because the A O C is anticipating that statewide probation funding deficit for next year. And since most of our officers are paid from the special revenue funds from the A O C, probation will need to cover any financial shortfall from the fee account next year. There is still a statewide shortage of probation officers, which are positions that require a bachelor's degree. This shortage is mostly due to the uncompetitive pay compared to other public safety positions that only require a high school diploma or G E D. Probation, surveillance, and detention officers are badge carrying law enforcement officers like other public safety positions, such as police, sheriff, and D P S. The compensation for probation officers should be comparable to other Cochise County public safety positions, such as a deputy sheriff, as they go through the same extensive testing and background checks and have a higher education requirement. Based on the survey, the starting salary would increase from forty one thousand nine twenty six to fifty one thousand four eighty nine. Funding request number five is a clerk two position funded from our special revenue fund. Court administration and the clerk's office is requesting to create a full-time criminal court clerk position that would enter changes of venues, dispositions, warrants, and discharges. The estimated annual cost is fifty one thousand dollars. The position would be funded by our special revenue account, funds one sixty two and one sixty nine, with average annual revenue of twenty seven thousand and thirty thousand dollars respectively. This is sufficient to sustain the position. Funding requests six through eight are requests from Benson, Wilcox, and Bowie Justice Courts to move court enhancement fund positions to general fund positions. As you heard from Judge Poppy, annual revenue for the enhancement fund has decreased due to changes in legislation that have eliminated some fines and fees. The revenue is not enough to cover the positions and operating expenses, such as the court automation fees. So the courts are using their cash reserves to fund the difference. The situation is not sustainable long term. The general fund for these justice courts have significant incoming revenue that offsets seventy to ninety five percent of the expenses. The estimated annual cost for each court is forty seven thousand three hundred and twenty five thousand. And the final funding request is from the Sierra Vista Justice Court. The court is requesting a hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred and thirty four dollars from the building enhancement fund for new paint and carpet. The court hasn't been updated since it was opened in two thousand and seven, and this is the busiest justice court in the county and sees lots of foot traffic through the building. The update will vitalize the court, improve the working conditions for court employees, and create a professional appearance for the public. In summary, we are requesting five hundred and sixty six thousand two hundred and forty six thousand for a hundred and twenty seven thousand eight hundred and thirty four thousand for building enhancements for a total general fund request of six hundred ninety four thousand and eighty dollars. We respectfully request that the board approve if many of these funding requests is possible. Are there any questions that I can answer before I turn it back over to Judge?
You mentioned, I appreciate the presentation very much. When I, when we first started out, I wrote down, does our material presented here talk about what I call the budget pendulum swinging back and forth between the state A O C and the county, and I think you addressed that pretty well. Does does our material that we have have a copy of your comments, just made language, yes?
Yes, oh, that should be in there with all our funding requests for the details.
The other question I had was, you mentioned higher education requirements for probation officers.
Yeah, they require a college student's degree.
I see. Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Did you comment your question, Judd? It's just a lot more, and it's scary for us to look at those big numbers, but you definitely convinced us how important it is, and
They are scary numbers.
I know, I can hear all of you are hesitating, but all of you were so so true and genuine, so it was very hard, very hard to not really take it in. So thank you for your presentation.
Well, we've kind of swung the pendulum on how we've addressed the courts in the budgeting process. I mean, each one used to come on bended knee at a separate time, you know, and ask, and and then we said, you know, it's the court system. It's a system. And so maybe you need to make these decisions within your system. So we handed money to the Superior Court Judge and said, you dole it out appropriately and fairly. Well, then we hear back from the people inside, they, well, that wasn't done, you know, so I guess what I'm saying to you is, I do believe that it's a system, and I do believe that it should work within itself instead of asking three outsiders to look at each one of your departments and say what the values are of that employee or the title for the head employee should be. And so our job is to make sure that we maintain a balanced budget. And and we know the importance of the court system. And I can assure you that we will do everything we can to fund each one of the constitutionally elected officials as well as the court system to the best of our ability to bring in dollars. And for us to bring in dollars, then we have to have an agreement on what the what's the tax rate. Because that's what we set. We don't, we don't know what the value is out there until the assessor tells us. We only set the tax rate to which we can tax people. And so that is a decision among these three people that will bring in the amount of money that these people, these three people determine as the tax rate. And that's going to be a finite amount. And and so I appreciate the presentations. I appreciate all the information that you have given us that we can look at and determine. It it seems as though the state and 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 the feds and and everybody is still looking at silos. And they forget. Maybe purposely, maybe, you know. And they forget, maybe purposely, maybe, you know. That every person that the sheriff picks up. It isn't just the sheriff's department that it affects. It affects everybody. And so uh, from the, you know, from the JP courts to the Superior Courts. To the probation people, to the, 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 the people that are in, and we have to defend them. We have to defend them and we have to prosecute them. And so sometimes people, you know, when they yell, we want. Law enforcement. They said, I shouldn't say that. They want public safety. They forget that it isn't just law enforcement. And so that's the balance that we have to, to, to work with. When we have aggression on one part of the team. It forces us to have to spend money that we don't have on other parts that address that same issue. So I hope that you understand that is that, you know, that um, there are things that cause the crime rate to go up. And it's how many people are picked up. It's not how many crimes actually occurred. So uh, we'll do the best we can and thank you for the information. And if you have any other.
Well, like I said to Sheriff yesterday, I am willing to discuss reallocation with priority to constitutional and fundamental functions of government. You can decide too.
I, and I don't, I don't think that what I heard was, or what I interpreted was what she said, hopefully. But we don't, I don't, I don't, I'm not mad at the sheriff for stopping, you know, the high-speed chases and for bringing people in that are bad and. And I know she didn't really say that, but I was, I was thinking, wait a minute, we, we don't have control over that. That's just coming in. And so hopefully our sheriff's department's being judicial about what they're doing so that you can be judicial about what they're bringing in. Um, but I just think that it's, we're in a bad situation in this county. And I don't think we can avoid that. And I recognize that. I know the board recognizes that. You know, in some, some case, you made that point very clear too. And we've been hearing it across the board.
He's been very aggressive about looking for funding so that he can be aggressive.
They can be effective.
Without the funding being available for all the other people that are addressed by this problem.
Yeah, that's.
And so.
Yeah, I got that now.
The point that I was trying to make is the fact that, you know, all of these others, I mean. Do you have places you can go to get more money? Do you have places you can go to get more money? And so it creates for us an imbalance. And um. And that's the reality. You know, it's not casting stones, it's just the way it is. You know, as he'll tell you, he's brought in fifty-eight million. But none of it's been for the court system or probation or for, you know, the. A little bit for the county attorney's office. I won't have to say they haven't gotten anything, but uh, but we need to always think of things as a system when we're in government. It's not just one, you can't react to one little piece.
Yeah.
And so that's what we'll hopefully do. We'll. Try to spread it as well as we can. And again, our bottom line is we have to create a balanced budget.
Very, very refreshing to hear you say that. I, I, I've been working down here for, like I said, two decades. And um, the county attorney's office, I think, does a very good job. Um, they have, but they have plenty of resources from different areas. It's not just the county. And so it's like having a car with a giant engine, but no brakes and bald tires. Um, you know, it can go really fast in a straight line, but it can't move and it can't stop. And, and I'm very happy to hear that your takeaway from this is that we all have to react. To whatever decisions the sheriff makes, who's an elected official. And whatever decisions Brian McIntyre makes, who's an elected official. And we're willing to do that. We're willing to do the best with what we've got, but um. You know, I'm just very happy to hear that you guys have that realization. That's, that's what we're doing. We're doing our best. I'm a fiscal conservative and I don't want to waste in any of the tax money that I pay. Um, so looking at um, being innovative and how we're using the funds that are available to us. Through things like phone apps to track um, probationers. I can look at my phone right now and tell you within ten feet of where my daughter is right now. I wrote down dental appointments. Last month I made my daughter uh, an appointment online for a dental appointment. And I got a text message when it was, you know, when the, there's no reason, I don't think that we can't implement that type of technology eventually. Into the court system so people can set their own court dates and we can have. Resources available to them so that um, our clerks can concentrate on what our clerks are supposed to be doing. And not constantly answering the phone and do that, you know. We don't have to pay retirement for robots. They never call in sick. Um, we don't have to pay them anything except the initial startup. And that's sort of the down the road plan that we have. And I'm also glad. Member, the board member? Never done this before.
Supervisor Judd.
Supervisor Judd, sorry.
That's okay. I'm used to it now. Then I'm stunned. You get to the end and you finally figure it out.
I'm, I'm just really glad to hear that, that you're realizing that we, we are a system and that's why we, we came because I think you're, you know, divide and conquer. We're all here together as a unified front.
One thing you haven't done, and, and this is from my perspective only. Is that the, that the court system. And all the pieces have not been as aggressive working with the legislature. Where is the fountain of a lot of your money? Um, and, and I would say the same thing to the public school teachers, you know, they're sitting there saying, well, we don't get very much. Well, it all comes from the state.
Right.
And so have you been to the state? Have you taken off your robe and, you know, and, and walked those aisles in the legislature? I can assure you that the sheriff does that. And, and people who are more aggressive are, are. Definitely the ones that benefit in almost any legislature. And so I think because sometimes the court system thinks of themselves as prestigious, you know, and it's. Maybe beneath them to go do that kind of thing. Well, you're suffering for the, the fact that. Things that should be paid for by the state in the court system, they keep shoving it off to somebody else thinking, well, you know, they, they're not going to complain. They're not going to complain. So uh, all I'm saying is, is that sometimes the, the. Even the laws that they pass, are you aggressive and, and looking at them? And talking with them about what they should be doing and shouldn't be doing. I mean. To our county supervisor association, we're always looking at everything that they're looking at. And so we look out for you some, but what I'm saying is. If you looked out for yourself more, I think you'd be um, in a better position financially anyway. Because we're certainly looking right now at, at the, the whole um, judicial system. And that includes, you know, probation. And is it a state responsibility? You see, we talked about, you know, you keep wanting to push things onto the feds. Well, things that we're doing should be pushed onto the state because it's a state responsibility. And so we, we need you to help us to sell that story. You know, we're trying to sell it for you. Because eventually we end up paying for the things that they don't.
I've sent Senator Gowen and Representative Diaz and Representative Griffin. Uh, an email on Tuesday and attached probation fact sheet. Because we're supposed to have a ten million dollars shortfall because. Somebody didn't realize probation officers were state employees and they didn't bump them up. So I did that. And yesterday I sent our county manager a fairly lengthy email when he inquired about um. Thoughts for maximizing efficiency and what kinds of things we should be doing. So I've been working. So I don't know what my predecessors did because I was just focused on.
It's not particularly you that I was pointing out. I just mean your system.
Yeah.
I mean, and, and um. If you inquired, how many of the people in the judicial system even know how to operate requests to speak on legislation? Do you see what I'm saying is, they're probably saying, well, that's not my job. Well, then you suffer the consequences.
Don't disagree.
So that, that's all I'm saying is that we all need to become more aggressive about the things that are important to us. And we realize that we're not a growing county. We're not growing economically. We're not growing um, with people. You know, so we're not, we're not going down right now. And so that's, we're grateful for that. So we have to learn to live within what we have. And to push back to those things that we really shouldn't be paying for. Did you want to speak?
Madam Chair, if I may, uh, I'd like to address the part of the legislature. So last year. Uh, staff from juvenile probation and adult probation actually met with uh, members of Congress. Gave them kind of like a rundown of, of some of the things we do. They were extremely uh. Resentive to what we do and, and asked a lot of questions. So, but it's, you're absolutely right. It's something that we need to look forward to like every year and continue to do. So hopefully this, this year we can, we can do the same.
Mr. Arias, did you mean the US Congress or did you misspeak and mean the state like?
State.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and they turn over. So you see, it has to be constant. That, that we keep, okay, re-educate, re-educate, you know, continue to educate. Thank you for that.
But Supervisor Crosby, I, I contacted last month, was in contact with um, some folks from the Arizona Administrative. Administrative Office of the Courts. And we provided them with a lot of information about specifically the overprime issues. Because um, they were supposed to meet with, I think, Senator Sinema, Senator Kelly. And I think Representative Siskomani about looking for money for Cochise County specifically. To deal with exactly what you're talking about. So we, we, we're taking steps.
That's what we all can do. That's what I'm saying to me.
Yeah.
We're in this game to win and that means that we come out with a balanced budget. So that's, that's our bottom line. You know, that's our responsibility.
Judge Thorne, I, what I read you on the eleven, ten fifty-one, I gave that in printed form yesterday to my colleagues here. I printed five more pieces of, of, of that piece of paper, including the exclusibility. Uh, part of, that was a U.S.C. eleven eighty-two. And passed those five out, those out to citizens yesterday. So I guarantee order is the number one issue. People that I talked to, I say, what, what should you support?
Yep.
If you're going to wait for anybody else, maybe. Yeah, might have a really long wait or a, a terminal wait.
Right. Well, I appreciate you all um, tolerating us firehosing you with this information on a Thursday afternoon after lunch. Next year, I'm getting the Tuesday morning slot, so. Stay awake here.
Ride doughnuts.
Uh, doughnuts and hot coffee.
Chairman English, I, I'd just like to say, we, our, our Supervisors Association as well, we have a, a. Conference at the end of the year, what do they call it? When we get together, we're, yeah. The Legislative Summit. Leading up to that, we present, and might be one of the reasons that Rich is communicating with you. But we present as legislative pieces that we decide what maybe we can push into the legislature. And we could, you could make suggestions and work with Rich and talk to any of us if you'd like to. Um, but we can, as supervisors and a state organization, and use our lobbyists. To get your needs into the legislature too. So you don't have to do it all by yourself, but of course we're going to need your, you know, your words. You might need to come to the summit to be, but doesn't that sound like maybe a resource for them?
It's always available to them. I think we send it out to everyone every year and say, do you have any legislation you want us to?
You do.
To push, you know, and so think it through.
So it's a little bit.
One that we pushed this year in CSA, came from Cochise County. It was, was um, signed by the governor and that was to add um, another person to the um.
ACJC.
Criminal justice system because again, they weren't looking at the whole system. Well, we got, you know, this part and this part and this part and they go, but well, as you said, when you worked here. You were what? In the, not in defense to begin with, you were with the um.
Public Defender's Office.
Public Defender's Office. Well, now there will be a person representing public defenders on the Arizona Criminal Justice Court. So that's what I'm saying is, you know, we, sometimes we get things pushed through. And that was something that benefited everybody around the state. So think about laws that need to be changed, you know. Um, and if we can, we'll certainly help you push it. But it, it has to be chosen by the county supervisor's association. So we need to put together a good selling point of why it's good for everybody. Okay.
All right.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to give you thirty seconds if you want to say anything. Hearing. That pit was in the thirties, so okay. Next meeting will be on uh, Tuesday, April the twenty-third. At ten o'clock AM in the Board of Supervisors hearing room for a regular Board of Supervisors meeting. And having said that.